Okay. Audio's good? Audio's good? All right. Okay. All right, I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. For information purposes, we have already approved Ms. Young to attend this meeting virtually from home. She's healing up from a foot injury. She is with us this evening virtually. With that, if I can... Actually, we're just gonna go straight into our public hearing on the FY24 operating budget. Rule's already been called. Ms. Ortega, do you have instructions for our speakers?
I do. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Who do we have?
Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Marco Sardi, and I am the Vice President of WJCEA. I'm here to advocate for all WJCC employees in regards to the budget proposal for the 2023-2024 school year. I know this is a complex and polarizing process. Our dual system makes it all the more challenging to come up with a budget that makes everyone happy, or at least content. I was so glad to hear the Board's support for our November rally and to read Dr. Heron's proposal for an eight percent raise for staff. This is much more in line with the ten percent both the staff and the community showed up to support for previously, and I am confident the Board will submit an equally bold proposal for the Board of Supervisors when your draft is finalized. I look forward to continuing my advocacy for us as employees and to keep the Board informed of the needs of our members. Previously, members of the Board have expressed it is up to the Board of Supervisors alone to determine what is and is not funded. But it is also true that you cannot receive for what you do not ask. I invite you to be an advocate for your employees and to ask yourselves at the conclusion of this process, did you do everything that you could to advocate? I look forward to hearing how you will increase staff retention, and I'm eager to start this process together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi.
Andrew Kason.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Andy Kason, Treasurer of WJCEA. I'm here to ask for you to put in ten percent in your proposed budget to the Board of Supervisors. Don't let this Board be the obstacle. Of all... After all, you... Of all of our elected leaders, you need to be on our side and advocate the best we can. We must, as a community, demand the schools our students deserve. And I ask that as you take your budget to the Board and our other funding partners, please know who is most harmed by underfunding. And that is one of the categories I'd like to highlight is students with special education needs. Half of our current teacher vacancies are sped teachers. We polled our members and asked to rank their concerns about whether sped students are receiving their federally mandated hours. And of the teachers we polled, seventy-one percent rated their concerns above a seven. It was a rank between one and ten, ten being extremely concerned. And of that seventy-one percent, the majority rated a ten. So please know what is on the line, and don't be afraid to demand the schools we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Ellen Parm.
Good evening, Chairman Dow, esteemed members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Ellen Parm, President of WJCEA. I was pleased to hear discussions involving the raise for staff salary for next year in the previous school board meeting. The eight percent increase in salary that is being proposed in the budget is a lot closer to ten percent than any other previous number. However, I do encourage the Board and our division leaders to push for ten percent. At the last school board session, HR presented key information on teachers' leave in the workforce. One hundred and forty-eight instructional staff departed in 2022, with some staff leaving in the middle of the school year due to reasons such as pay and burnt out. I know on the last school board regular session, it was mentioned that it is up to the Board of Supervisors when it comes to the funding, and that we must reach out to them. And we did. Since the last board meeting, many of us throughout the community have been advocating for the budget, for a raise in salary, and urge you to advocate with us. And let the Board of Supervisors know and see how important funding is this year to keep our teachers, to bring in more resources with our growing multilingual program and other services to help the needs of our students. One school was already accredited with condition standing at a level three for both English and math, and more do not need to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parm.
Jay Everson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jay Everson. You know, I don't remember the names of many of my teachers from high school, but I do remember Mrs. Iger for junior English. She set out from a mission from God to get us to speak with proper English, you know, not only but also, that sort of thing. So, back in November, my ears perked up when one of your speakers came forward and started off by saying, "Me and my wife are teachers." No, sir, it's my wife and I. The reason I bring this up is this person wants a ten percent raise. It seems to me that we need to be looking at merit paying. Because when you have teachers who use in a form such as this, "He and my wife," I gotta tell you, it's not good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Everson. And that's the end of our speakers. Thank you for coming out and offering your comments to our budget process. When we move on to item four, our meeting has been reconvened. Item two, is there a member that will certify our closed session? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. And is there a member that will approve the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I most moved approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include item nine point zero eight, Approval of Decision Regarding Personnel Investigation Appeal Case Number Two Zero Two Two... Oh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
All right, so the motion is to amend the agenda to add, agenda item nine point zero eight, to our, excuse me, action items. And that motion would be Approval of Decision Regarding Personnel Investigation Appeal Case Number Two Zero Two Two dash two zero two three dash zero one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Discussion. So I'll just add for our listening audience that in closed session, we did have to hear a personnel investigation, and the Board is ready to decide on that investigation. All right, Ms. Aller, on the motion to amend.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Okay, so we will now see item nine point eight on our action items, Approval of Decision Regarding Personnel Investigation Appeal Case Number, as previously read. All right. I want to invite a young man to the podium, Mr. Samuel Giesemann. He is... You can come on up, Mr. Giesemann. He's with troop number one zero three, and he's participating in our meeting this evening. He's getting ready to earn his citizenship in the community merit badge. So welcome, Samuel. You want to tell everybody to rise?
Will you all rise and join the pledge of allegiance with me? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, fortress sands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Well done, Samuel. Thank you. Great job. Okay. When we move on to item five one, Announcements and Superintendents' Reports. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week was Principal Appreciation Week in WJCC schools, but it's impossible to contain our appreciation for this incredible building leaders to just one week. So please join me in recognizing them this evening for all they're able to do to support our students, staff members, and community. As a reminder, we're hosting a job fair at Lafayette High School on Friday, January twenty-seventh. Administrators will conduct onsite interviews for current vacancies for this school year and all positions for next school year as well. Career switchers should bring their college transcript to review next steps for beginning a career in education. Employment offers may be made on the spot for well-qualified candidates. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any board reports? Ms. Hundley?
Yes, I have one for the Special Ed Advisory Council. We had our meeting, and the Board would like to applaud the schools and the Special Ed Department for their Virginia Inclusive Audit. And we will be getting that presentation in February. And this is just a reminder, any citizens can come to our meetings. And the next one will be February ninth at the Rex Center from six thirty to eight o'clock.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Any other board reports? Yes.
On last week, we had the Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting. And so during that, we have lots of things that are coming down the pike, and you will see during our consent agenda, we will, I assume, we will vote for a resolution around acknowledging February as Career and Technical Education Month. I'm also really excited that in the month of February, on February sixteenth, CTE is putting together a job fair for our students. And so many companies out in our community, they've been reached out to, and so we would love to have you come and be a part of that and talk to our students about job opportunities just within your field and hopefully within your particular company. So thank you, Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Any other reports? I want to say that it was my privilege as a board member. Thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to participate in the Teachers of the Year's presentations. It's... It's... I don't know what to say. It really gives you a nice bolster, a shot in the arm, bit of energy for the duration of our year when you get to see, get into the schools and to the classrooms and be able to applaud teachers that are just here for all the right reasons, and their students appreciate them. You see it this year, all the students were really just eager to gather around their teachers and show their appreciation for what they've done in their lives, up to this point anyway. I also do want to offer, on behalf of the Board, sincere thoughts and well wishes to Ms. Abigail Zwerner, who was injured at a Newport New School. And so just want to say our thoughts and prayers and well wishes are with you, Ms. Zwerner, and for that entire school division. I want to move on to item six one, Student and Staff Recognitions. We've got a few, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Hundley to come down with me to the front, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Ortega.
Good evening. Tonight, we are honored to recognize seventeen of the Division's outstanding teachers. As your name is called, Teachers of the Year, please come forward to be recognized. From Berkeley Middle School, Ms. Amanda Fay. From Bright Beginnings Preschool, Sarah Clark. From Clara Bird Baker Elementary School, Caroline Fincham. From DJ Montague Elementary School, Catherine Ty. From Jay Blain... Blatton Elementary School, Elizabeth Hoffman. From James Blair Middle School, Patrice Lombusta. From James River Elementary School, Roxanne Gray. From Jamestown High School, Jennifer Roman. From Hornsby Middle School, Matthew Sanderson. From Matoka Elementary School, William Geezy. From Matthew Whaley Elementary School, Kylie Johnson. From Norwich Elementary School, Anna Leah Wiggins. From Stonehouse Elementary School, Carolyn Estes. From Warhol High School, John King. From Lafayette High School, Carrie Moore. Carrie Moore is not only the Lafayette High School Teacher of the Year, but also the High School Level Teacher of the Year winner. From Tuano Middle School, Michelle Dana. Michelle is also not only Teacher of the Year for her school, but also for all the middle school level. And from Laurel Lane Elementary School, Ellen Frackleton. Ellen is not only the Teacher of the Year for Laurel Lane, but also for the entire elementary school level. Oh, and she's the WJCC Division Teacher of the Year. So, number one. The WJCC Teacher of the Year Program allows us to pay tribute to teachers who are exceptionally skilled, dedicated, and who demonstrate excellence in the classroom. Each school's Teacher of the Year is selected by peers for their outstanding classroom instruction and leadership. These teachers embody WJCC's core values of individualism, integrity, innovation, accountability, and collaboration. Congratulations to each of you for being named Teacher of the Year for your school. We appreciate all you do to help our students and schools be successful. Mr. Chair, this concludes our recognitions.
Principals want to join your teachers at the front of the room? That'll be awesome.
Thank you all for being here, principals for being here and supporting your teachers, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of this for all of your great work, all of your efforts. They don't go unnoticed. I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item seven, our public comment for the evening. Take a tip. Put it back to Ms. Ortega. I'm gonna be okay. Ms. Ortega.
So bear with me, you're gonna hear me read the same instructions again. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Mr. Chair, that concludes my directions.
Ms. Ortega, who do we have?
Jessica Anderson.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Anderson, and I want to address a trend throughout our state, nation, and even our very own school board, the targeting of books in our school libraries for their removal. As a full believer in parental and family choice, I am slightly surprised by this type of rhetoric that has continued, and this type of rhetoric that has continued to escalate. I am sure that at least ninety percent of our students in our middle and high schools possess a cellphone, I know my oldest two do, and with it have far more access to inappropriate and even harmful content than any book could ever offer. Highlighting a single paragraph or paragraphs in a novel that is filled with hundreds more pages telling a story filled with context which is written to invoke emotions and thoughts is not to be a danger to our students. If a student has signed a book that her family deems inappropriate for their family, it's an opportunity to engage with their teacher and reach a solution that meets the needs of everyone involved. And I know that this is happening in our very own district. If the newest book that has been auto-generated from your books-to-band email or Facebook group causes you concern, consider this an opportunity to be a parent and discuss with your student why this book is an appropriate option for you and your family, the choices I make for my family, and should never strip other families of their choice. And in fact, the provocative passages that I've heard aloud being read at school boards around the nation has stripped the community members, both here and listening home and all around, of the option of hearing or reading that particular book. Our option was taken away. And finally, I want to ask that the Board continue to advocate for a ten percent raise for educators and staff who have continued to navigate these issues and so many others within our very district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Michael Hoseng.
Good evening. I'd like to address comments made and not made at the last meeting regarding whether parents, voters, and citizens have a right to review proposed textbooks and render opinions and suggestions to them, or should it simply be left to teachers as advocated? It's clear from the presentation... It's clear from the presentation that the recommendation is to not follow your own policies and to leave it up to teachers, since they are allegedly the ones most familiar with the subjects, and us parents, voters, and citizens don't know what the hell we're talking about. Even a couple of Board members agreed, stating that since teachers supposedly have a better command of their subject area, they should be the only arbitrators of what books to use. Unlike last year, would you recommend a book that had a picture of a Trump rally on its cover or advocated for smaller government? I doubt it. Many Board members simply sat on their hands and said nothing. Only one Board member stood up for the parents, voters, and citizens, and rightly stated that the Board and administration cannot assume that citizens are not knowledgeable in the areas being taught. Besides these, besides these being our children and that we know what's best for them, some of us actually have doctorate degrees. Some of us have actually been working for years and have actual experience many of the same subjects that are being taught. Yet you don't believe that we should have any input in the determination of what textbook should be used, contrary to what your policies state. This is shameful coming from a Board and administration that is supposed to be looking out for our children. Parents, voters, and citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Anne Marie Smith. Hi, good evening. Regarding the budget, I didn't catch my name in time to get on that. I oppose any budget increase that requires additional funding from the community but beyond the current allocated limits and amounts. Teacher raises, everybody would support this, I support this, but I'm confident there are ways to cut the fat from what we already have and find the money internally. It's not lost on me, however, that the teachers left tonight, and they've left on other nights. And it just appears somewhat disrespectful to the very Board that they demanded respect from themselves and requested raises. And then lastly, I posed several questions last week regarding the book review, and I didn't feel that they were adequately answered at all. And I would like some answers to those questions before that's voted on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
That's it.
All right, thank you all for coming out and lending your voices as well to this process. I'll move on to item eight, our consent agenda. I have a few items here. Item eight-one, approval of the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for November 2022. Item eight-two, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for December 2022. Item eight-three, approval of minutes from January 5th 23 Budget Work Session. Item four, approval of minutes from January 5th 2023 Meeting. Item five, approval of Resolutions R-2-23 Black History Month. Item six, approval of Resolution R-3-23 Career and Technical Education Month. And then, item eight-seven, approval of Resolution R-4-23 National School Counseling Week. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
All right, our action items for the evening. Please do not let me forget nine-eight. Somebody watch my back, thank you. All right. Nine-one, approval of personnel actions, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Item nine-two, approval of the VSBAC Code of Conduct for school board members. We've seen this in our last meeting. Asked that Board members take a look at it over the two-week period. This has not changed since we last saw it and signed it a year ago. Is there a motion to approve the VSBAC Code of Conduct for school board members?
I move to approve the VSBAC Code of Conduct for school board members as presented.
Second.
And thank you, Ms. Ortega and Dr. Beers, excuse me, for the second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Ms. Aller will actually sign this at the conclusion, is that right? Okay. Item nine-three, approval of request to purchase seven school buses, is there a motion? Item nine-point-three.
I move to approve the purchase request for seven school buses from Sunny Merriman Incorporated for a total cost of $954,363.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any discussion? Just going back through my notes here, looking where these were funded. So funded in the amount of $945,000, that's already included in the FY '22 year-end spending. So that portion is already taken care of. The remaining amount, the $9,363, is included in the FY '23 operating budget, just for reminder sake. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Thank you. And item nine-four, if I can have a motion to approve the request to purchase three activity buses, which are different than school buses.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the school board approve the purchase request for three activity buses from Sunny Merriman in an amount of $241,998 using contract number E-194-90742.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And is there any discussion on this? So again, just as a reminder, this is being funded directly through the transportation budget. All right, Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Item nine-four, is there a motion to approve the request to purchase, excuse me, award of contract for additional temporary mobile classrooms at Stonehouse Elementary School? Is there a motion? I think I said nine-four, did I say nine-four? I apologize, I'm at nine-five.
I move to approve the award of contract to Mobilee's Mobile Space Incorporated for an additional temporary mobile classroom at Stonehouse Elementary School with a monthly lease rate not to exceed...
Thousand?
$1,153.22 per month? Or $151,354.50 over the four-year term of the lease?
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Ms. Ortega.
Have these, have these prices remained pretty stable? Or is this much higher than what we have paid for?
I think it's remained reasonably stable. Miss, you and you are aware of any increase in price for lease or Mr. Snipes?
No, I'm not aware of any price increases.
It's barely in line. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Donner. Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
All right, item nine-six. Just reminding myself about nine-eight. Item six, approval of, it's happened before, right? So, all right, nine-six, approval of temporary increase in substitute pay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the temporary increase in substitute pay from January 1st, 2023, through the remainder of the '22-'23 school year with an estimated cost of $635,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any discussion? Ms. Hummel?
I just want to make, make clear that we are doing this temporarily because we're experiencing a really, a really difficult time finding substitutes. And we're gonna be, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're gonna be doing kind of an analysis at the end of the school year, is that correct? If you could just maybe tell the public what we're doing with that.
Yes, we're gonna monitor the increase in sub... Hello?
There you go.
I'm back. Monitor the increase, the increase in subpay with the fill rate of subs in our classrooms. Generally, at the moment, we're about a 60% fill rate. And classrooms are left unfilled and teachers are having to cover. And so we'll monitor if this makes a difference or not, and then adjust accordingly for next year.
And on that note, so to Ms. Hummel's point, the funds used to support this proposal are through attrition savings.
That's correct, sir, unfilled positions this year.
Unfilled positions, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Or Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Item nine-seven, approval of civics and economics textbook selection and adoption process. Do we have a motion for nine-seven?
Mr. Chair, I've moved that the Board approve the civics and economics textbook selection and adoption process. This selection and adoption process will review textbooks to support the eighth-grade civics and economics course.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any discussion? Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, I just have a question in looking at the roster. I'm just, there are some positions that are still pending. Are those about to be filled? Or are there still, we're still looking for some applicants?
We're still looking for applicants. We went out through our Engage With Us twice, and I think on the last round, we did have some people who applied, and they're going through the process right now for potential selection. We hope to have a full slate of members very soon.
So is there still, has the application process been closed? I mean, can, can people still apply if they'd like to be on that?
If we still have an open position, we can fill it absolutely up until the process starts. And we're, we've reached out to principals, we've reached out to PTA, as well as the Engage With Us to try to get parent participation.
So it sounds like up until the process starts, they really have until the week of January 23rd?
Absolutely.
To show interest, okay. So there's our PSA.
And I also remind the public that they have almost an entire month in which they can examine and... That's our public comment period, January 23rd through February 17th.
I've just realized Ms. Ford is here too. If there's, if I've misspoke, or if there's any difference, you want to jump in?
Yes, ma'am. We have filled the two remaining parent slots with Engage With Us participants. Mrs. Chisenhall, our social studies coordinator, was able to reach out and confirm that those two individuals were able to join the committee.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Any other discussion or questions? Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
And then item nine-eight, if I can have a motion to approve our, the decision regarding Personnel Investigation Appeal Case Number 2022-2023-01. And this is approving the superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board uphold the superintendent's decision in the Personnel Investigation Appeal discussed this evening, and authorize the Chair to issue a written decision setting forth the school board's rationale.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Okay, I see Mr. Kiefer coming up. We're on to our item 10-one, review of '23-'24 school calendar development.
Mr. Chair, last board meeting, Mr. Kiefer presented the committee's proposed calendar for next year. And then we're going through the process to ask for public feedback, and we included some of the board's suggestions in that feedback. And Mr. Kiefer's gonna present the information tonight and next steps. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, good evening, board members. When we shared with you a draft version of the calendar during our early January meeting, we reviewed for you several of the key items that the Calendar Committee took into consideration during that process. I wanted to reiterate those to you at this time. The last bullet on this particular slide talks about the strategic placement of opportunities for teacher collaboration, learning, and planning. We call those CLP days during the school year. One of the pieces, I just want to remind not only the board, but also the viewing public, is that those strategically placed days generally become student holidays within the calendar that sometimes may feel like they don't make a lot of sense unless you are following rigorously the calendar discussion. So I just wanted to point that out. As we shared some of the key dates in the recommended calendar, there was a particular discussion at the board level around the proposed winter break, which currently in the recommendation is December 1 through Jan. 2, and then that last day of school, which is June 13th. And at the request of the board, we went out to the community and asked some specific questions around the winter holiday break. Is there a preference for nine days at a holiday break? 10 days for a holiday break? In some cases, 25 or 30 days at a holiday break? We focused those two questions, and I'll share some data with you, and also gave the community an opportunity to give overall, general feedback. This gives you some of the data, the demographic information related to that stakeholder feedback. There were 468 respondents that took advantage of the survey. I want to thank the communications team and our data analyst, Dr. Molly Sullivan, for spending some time over the holiday weekend, really crunching the data that I'm able to share with you this evening. 468 respondents. In that response category, you could notate several different scenarios of your involvement. In general, 183 parents and guardians, 163 students, 152 staff members, and three community members. I wanted to note specifically that the student input was much stronger in this particular calendar feedback scenario that I've seen in the three previous scenarios that we've done. So I just point out that actually there was larger student feedback than there was staff feedback. Of the 183 parents that responded, 101 indicated elementary school affiliation, 64 indicated middle school affiliation, 87 indicated high school affiliation, and about 60 indicated they were in multiple categories with students at various levels. The staff data was generally split between elementary and middle school, about 60 each indicating that they worked in that setting. 12 high school staff members indicated a response, and then 15 district or central office staff. Of the 163 students that responded, 160 indicated that they were currently in high school. Three indicated that they were in middle school. And then we had three community members who took part in the survey. As a point of comparison, there were 468 respondents for this particular feedback opportunity. In our calendar survey feedback opportunity for the '22-'23 calendar, which was last year in February, there were 1,700 respondents. So a dip in the response rate. You may be wondering what it looked like in 2021. That number is approximately 1,300. In the specific question around support for a nine-day or 10-day winter break, the general response pattern would suggest that those that completed the survey felt like a 10-day winter break was more preferable. Somewhere in the neighborhood of forty percent supported or strongly supported a ten-day winter break, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen percent supported or strongly supported a nine-day winter break. In the question that we asked, not only did we say a nine-day break with a June thirteenth dismissal, we said also a ten-day break with June fourteenth. So we tried to lay the different scenarios in front of folks to be able to weigh in. There were certain themes that emerged from the open response portion. There were questions that emerged regarding the number of student holidays throughout the calendar, which is part of the reason that I mentioned that the collaboration, learning and planning days are spread throughout the calendar because in previous survey opportunities, our staff has indicated that they appreciate the opportunity to plan collaboratively with one another during the course of the year. The time at the end of the academic year wasn't necessarily beneficial, nor was it beneficial from the staff member's perspective to come back into the building two or three weeks before school started. So that's, that's part of the rationale for where those are placed. A number of comments were along the lines of, if you're starting earlier, you should end earlier. And that does make, that makes logical sense. The, the challenge with that is working to fill one hundred and eighty instructional days into a calendar and then looking at various breaks throughout the year. Being able to accommodate that scenario doesn't always fit within people's thought processes. There was conflicting feedback in this particular survey around the use of early release days. In previous feedback surveys I've shared with the board, that members of the community and staff felt like early release days were very difficult to manage. Those folks did not turn out in droves in this survey and several folks in this survey wondered why we wouldn't return and we should return to early release days. So we've, we've utilized survey feedback in the past to make the decision to not utilize as many early release days and this particular survey suggested that we erred in that and we ought to reconsider. Generally, respondents felt like a ten-day winter break was preferable. Many people in the open portion suggested that they felt like three weekends during a winter break was desirable. Also within that themed feedback was the idea that the, the longer break, the ten-day winter break, provided family members, staff members, students with an opportunity to make travel plans over the break. There was, there were a couple of comments that were also around what some people perceived as a random student holiday in March, Tuesday, March the fifth. In fact, from our perspective, it's not random. We have looked very specifically at providing a CLP day in that first week of March. In discussion with election officials, the idea of a high voter turnout on a presidential primary necessitates the school division to consider whether or not students should be in school. And from our perspective, March fifth as a Tuesday is an important day to utilize that collaboration, learning and planning day. Relative to next steps, I know the board wanted to take this survey feedback into consideration. In years past, we would be asking you to approve a particular calendar this evening. We will bring forward to you two calendars at the next meeting for a decision point. One calendar is the current, current calendar that we've already presented, which is a nine-day winter break over two weekends. We would go to school on that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the winter break week, start break on Thursday, come back to school on January the third, classes will dismiss on June thirteenth. The other calendar we'll bring forward takes into consideration the ten-day break that many in the community indicated support for, which means that we'd be in school on Monday and Tuesday of that week of winter break, return back to school on January the third and conclude the year on June fourteenth.
So does that mean, excuse me, so does that mean process-wise that in our next meeting on February seventh, we're taking action on two calendars? Voting one up, voting one down?
Yes.
Okay. Can, okay.
Or you can vote just to approve the one that you prefer. You don't have to vote one down, you just would choose your preference based on the feedback.
Well, for agenda planning, they'd have to both be on there, right?
Right.
For agenda planning, they'd both, they'd both need to be on there.
If the board wants to give direction tonight, we can just present the one calendar?
So, and that's kind of how I had imagined this kind of taking place, us getting the information, having a discussion, seeing if we could get to that point where we gave you some direction on an item, a calendar that we put on action item for February seventh. Was that our understanding or did you think something else? Ms. Hummel, looking at you, what do you think?
I'm trying to think of what we, what we decided. Maybe, maybe we can see how the discussion goes tonight and then kind of go from there.
I want to let Ms. Young lead out on this since she raised the initial point on a ten-day calendar. Ms. Young, what are your thoughts?
Definitely the, the second proposed calendar where students would have off an additional day, the twentieth of December, and get out of school on the fourteenth. That would be my choice because I do prefer that, that families have that length of time and teachers have that length of time also. I, I just have a question for Mr. Kiefer, if, if Mr. Kiefer's available.
Right here, Ms. Young.
Mr. Kiefer, was it ever proposed that students would get out of school on the twenties, would get out of school? They would be in school on the twenty-second but wouldn't come back until January the eighth?
No, ma'am. We did, we did not look at that as a calendar committee.
Okay, because that gives the three weekends that somebody mentioned and it also gives the, the two full weeks, but that's just a thought and, but otherwise I would go with the second proposal.
With what we've heard tonight, is there interest from the board at large to consider a ten-day versus the nine that we've already seen? So Ms. Hunley, Ms. Donner, it looks like everybody's saying yes, we'd, we'd like to see.
I do have a question though.
Yes.
Of Mr. Kiefer, about that.
I was just going to ask how we get to ten days, if you can share that with us. But Ms. Hummel, what was your question?
I'm fine for him answering that and then I can have my question.
Go ahead.
My question was, of the thirty percent, you know, the staff, did they, if you break it out by the staff, did they have any preference or did it kind of match the overall blended group of respondents?
Would say it was pretty well blended in.
Okay, so it wasn't starkly different?
It was not.
Thank you.
The starkest difference was from students.
Okay, okay. In what way? They wanted the thirty days?
They wanted, they wanted as many days as you could possibly approve. Start late and end early. How, how do you feel about that?
Okay, thank you.
And throw in some virtual? So, Mr. Kiefer, we would be interested to see how you get to ten, if it's possible. Could you run us through that?
I can. I, in the slide deck, there's a hidden slide. I don't know if you guys can effort to that. I don't, I don't know if the tech guys can open up that PowerPoint and I could demonstrate it or do you have the PDF? The calendar one?
Okay, yeah.
Simple answer, Mr. Dow, would be we, we, we go an extra day at the end, basically. We go, instead of finishing Thursday, we finish on Friday and we add one day to the winter break.
Right, so date-wise, it would be December, you're in school December eighteen and nineteen and your first day of winter break is December twenty. Come back to school on January third and then we add the day at the end of the school year, so January fourteenth, January, excuse me, June fourteenth would be the last day of school.
Okay. Dr. Heron, I don't want to sideline you here. Do you have any comments?
Nope, I'm ready for whatever the board wishes to proceed with.
Let me go around then one more time. Ms. Donner, do you have a preference, knowing how we get to ten days, nine versus ten? And I'll ask everyone?
I'm comfortable with getting to the ten days.
Okay. Ms. Hunley, same. Ms. Ortega?
It seems like that's what people who took the survey preferred, so it's fine.
Dr. Beers? Ms. Hummel? And I think we know where Ms. Young is. So thank you, Mr. Kiefer, for getting us there and that's what we'd like to see on the, on the action item.
Sir.
February seventh?
February seventh it is.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Thank you for your work and for bringing the community in, into this as well. I appreciate it.
Sure.
All right. So we're getting near the end here. Want to move on to our board matters, board member comments. If I can begin with Ms. Young, since she's relaxing at home this evening. Ms. Young?
I don't know that this is very relaxing. My computer almost died. I haven't run between a vote. I just want to thank the board for allowing me to participate by, by Zoom tonight. And I'm happy about the calendar, of course. I want to do everything and I do want to say that our students are part of the community of people that we serve, so they have the right to have an opinion. So, and I think when I was that age, I would have taken as many days as I could get also. So, but I do want the teachers to have the time they need to, to de-stress and to refresh themselves. But that's all my comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Donner, if I can have your direction?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment of that this week I had the privilege of attending the York, James City, Williamsburg NAACP Martin Luther King Junior ACO Student Honors Luncheon. And to cheer our students on, we had students from Lafayette, Warhill and Jamestown who were all recognized for their academic achievements and it was wonderful just to see the community and that cross-section between being there with fellow board members with some of our leaders, division leadership, principals and folks from around Williamsburg. That was just such an honor to be able to be part of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Hunley?
Yes, well, I wasn't here the last meeting. I was out of the state, but I wanted to say this is my official first year on the board. And so I'm just so happy I made it through the year and I just wanted to thank all the citizens that voted for me and have trusted in me to serve the students and the staff and, and the community. I do want to say, we, we, just being at events and being in the school just always reminds me of to focus on the promise and not always the problems, the good and not always the bad, the glows and not always, you know, the groves and the positive over the negative. And just seeing the Teachers of the Year and this young man sitting here, we have a lot of wonderful things going on in the school division and if we can just keep our eyes on that and focus on that, it would be great. And then I also got to attend the Village Honoring of the Giants and they had at the library, if you haven't got to see it, the one on Scotland Street, there's an art thing that the community came together to piece together. Dr. Blatton?
We're lost here. We're lost here.
Yeah, we're back to, it's a huge mural of Dr. Blatton and of course, we have one of our elementary schools named after him. And then there was a, he was our first African-American doctor here in Williamsburg and then also the first African-American kindergarten teacher, Ms. Gerst. There's also a mural on her and a lot of information on hers. Our community is very important and anything we can do to keep them involved and engaged in what we do is great. And just congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year. We used to call them TOYS, that's what it, T-O-Ys. And as a former Teacher of the Year, it's always interesting, even when that is bestowed upon you, you always say, wow, that's an honor for me, but there's so many other of my colleagues that should be standing here. And it's always hard because you're excited for yourself, but you're also wanting others to be recognized. So I just wanted to say, thank, thank, thank you for everything they do in such trying times for our students. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. If I can go to Ms. Hummel?
Sure, thanks. I also attended the NAACP ACO Awards and I guess I've been, this is, this is my last year on the board, so it was seven years ago that I went to the first NAACP ACO Awards. And then we had that two-year period of time where we couldn't meet at all, so it was just delightful for everyone to be back and together in a big room, celebrating the future of our community. The future is bright when you see all of the outstanding accomplishments of the students that were recognized. It's just a really feel-good experience and I wanted to thank the NAACP ACO Committee for, for developing this program, knowing that the, the woman, I think that, that started it many years ago, Bobby Alexander, was my, was my math teacher. So that ages me, but anyway. And then also wanted to congratulate all of the Teachers of the Year, just because you are the reason we're all here. I think I can speak on behalf of the school board. Every single member of the school board is supportive of all of our teachers and then to see the, the Teachers of the Year celebrated, it's just a really, another wonderful, wonderful thing. So thank you and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I also attended the incredible celebration of, of young people. Oh, sorry, that, that event Sunday put on by the NAACP. And it was truly, it was truly a, an inspiring time there, having watched, seeing all these incredibly dedicated, bright students and, and you, I remember thinking at the end when we walked out, that I looked back and it's like, you know, I think we're going to do all right, we're going to be all right. There are a lot of incredibly bright students out there and I was so glad to see so many of them. I have to tell you, I was particularly proud to see Aaron Butler up there. He was the one that introduced each of the recipients and the principal and their parents. Aaron Butler was one of my doctoral students many, many years ago and it has been really fun to watch his career as well. The one thing I kept waiting for in some of these luncheons in the past, Aaron would get up and sing. And if you've ever heard Aaron Butler sing, he has an, just an extraordinary voice, but I also found out that he, that he does sing in the choir at First Baptist Church, so I know I, when I want to go, I can hear him. I also would like to congratulate our Teachers of the Year. I know that they're, that they're representative of, of so many of our teachers out there and it was really great to see them. And one other, I just, I just want to say one other, one other thing. This is my last year, so some of my speeches are probably going to be a little longer maybe than they have been in the past. I was really pleased to see a, a young man wearing a Boy Scout uniform come up here. I have to admit, it took me way, 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 way back when I became an Eagle Scout and a Junior Assistant Scout Master and really learned what it was to be prepared, no matter what you're doing, where you're going. And so my hat's off to you and, and keep working on it. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ortega?
Yes, I, I won't belabor the discussion, but I, I too attended the ACO event hosted by the NAACP and it was, as all my colleagues have already expressed, really inspiring. These kids, when you hear that there's, everything they participate in and their, and their accolades, it, it makes you tired just listening to it. So you can't even imagine how they accomplish what they do in a week. But I think that it's just a wonderful event. I was, I was honored to be able to participate and I, of course, the, it was put on over Martin Luther King Junior holiday weekend and I think that's no better way to honor the legacy of someone who gave his life so that these kids could have the opportunities that they have. So I was very happy to be there. And of course, congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year. There are so many hours, blood, sweat, tears, time that goes into what they do every day and it's just wonderful to be able to recognize excellence in the field. So again, congratulations and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. I'll keep mine brief to save what's left of my voice, but wanted to say thank you to the calendar committee, everybody that's served on the committee internally, externally, Ms. Hummel serving on the committee this year as well. Thank you so much for participating in that. And I think it's important to say that because, you know, we offer or ask for a slight modification, slight modification this year, and that's not to negate all of the hard work that's gone into putting together a calendar that we could use and that we could put forward to families for preparation's sake. So I just want to say thank you to the entire committee, everybody, everyone that participated and that will participate in the future. It's a valuable committee that we desperately need. Want to move on to item twelve, our upcoming events. We have our policy committee, which is another very crucial committee, meeting on January twenty-fifth at eight-thirty a.m. here at the central office room two oh three. Our board, I think everybody's going to the Capitol Conference, is that right? I think everyone is?
I'm attending remotely.
Virtually, yeah, okay. Well, I'll be there one way or the other on January thirtieth through the thirty-first and that'll be in Richmond. And by the way, on the thirtieth, we'll be meeting in collaboration with our city and um, city and county counterparts, meeting with our legislators on the thirtieth, Zoom, over Zoom. Uh, and then on February first, the Student Advisory Committee will be meeting at the Lafayette High School Media Center at three PM. Uh, for our upcoming meetings, we have our closed session, followed by work session and action items on February seventh, four and four-thirty respectively, at, uh, room three hundred of Central Office, and then on February twenty-first, uh, closed session and our regular meeting, six and six-thirty, closed session in the room three hundred and our regular meeting back here in the gymnasium, James Blair. Okay. With that, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Geesman, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mom, for bringing them and staying so long. Meetings adjourned.